And the speakers. The other one, the mic only reaches 12 feet. This one's supposed to reach 19 feet. So I'm gonna end up having to get a longer USB cable. And then I can actually put this thing on a tripod and then in the middle. 360 degree camera. So it's pretty awesome. I have it zoomed to there though.
Do we know if Merly is coming? We don't know or she's not coming. Okay, all right, let's go ahead and get started then. We have a forum. Everybody would join us for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
State of America to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, just liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Bring the meeting to order. First item of business is to consider approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by, a motion by Member Montez, second by Vice President Gryl. That'd be a roll call vote. Elva? Lupe? Chris?
Yes.
My vote is yes. So motion carries. Consider approval of minutes from the regular board meeting of April 15th.
I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything, Greg. I would make a motion that we approve.
There's a second. Motion by Member Montez, Montez, second by Vice President Gryl. All in favor? Elva?
Yes.
Lupe? Chris? And my vote is yes also. So we go on to 1C. Consider approval of minutes from the special board meeting of April 29th. Now, I didn't notice here, I would like there to be one change. It says board members absent or tardy, Chris Montez via Zoom. I believe Chris was on time by Zoom. So I think that he needs to be moved up to the board members present.
Yeah, we have to.
Okay, is there, uh, was there a motion to accept those minutes with the one change?
What was the change again, Greg?
So it shows Chris as being absent or tardy, but he informed me that he was there for the entire meeting, so. If you see, it says board members present and then board members absent or tardy.
It says here, Chris Montez via Zoom.
Right, but he was not absent or tardy. He said he was there. Start the meeting.
Okay, so move. Second.
Okay, motion was made by Vice President Gryl, second by Member Castillo. All in favor? Elva?
Yes.
Lupe? Chris?
Yes.
My vote's yes. All right, we move on to 2A. Facilities update. Mike, are you doing that or are you having Mr. Montoya do that?
We've got Daniel on the line and so Daniel's gonna go over that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mitchell. Just wanted to update you for the month of May. Where we're at with some of the work that's being done. Without having kids at the school and we're still having our custodial grounds and maintenance crew working. Just that we continue to look at priorities at the school and continue working with Johnson Control. Fire alarm panel's still giving us messages and alerts. We do have a PO set up for, to get them in to look at the high school in Garfield at this time. So they've scheduled a time to set that up. We keep getting alerts on that, so they're gonna come back and check that out. They did come back last week, I believe, and they installed a backflow valve and a module at the middle school. After they, a couple of years ago, they updated our fire alarm system and panel. But our piping, our valves going into the school didn't meet the requirement. So they installed a backflow valve in one of our boiler rooms and a module for that. That's completed. Just a few odds and ends. Still looking at Seapump and Associates are going to guide us in helping us where we need the safety railing that we talked about for rooftops for any work and maintenance of HVAC. And just to let you know, we do have Ray Martinez has been out on medical leave for a while. We're trying to deal with any HVACs issues that we have as we come up on those. And let's see, we are getting a quote, I believe, from Jimmy set up the company Maverick to get a final updated quote for pumps at Garfield and at the high school. And that's for irrigation purposes, water going to those schools. At this time, I mean, we're not really using too much lighting, so we're just addressing any fixing of any lights as they come up that they're not working and we get them looked at immediately. Again, reminder, the work is completed at Garfield. They finished their playground and canopy got repaired. And so Brandy Oldgin is happy at Garfield. We're looking at, see how we can rearrange and run that irrigation system and kind of upgrade a little bit for the kids. The work that was done at the softball baseball field and it's too bad we don't have Miss, what's her name? Delia came to the board meetings? I can't remember her name.
Phyllis?
Phyllis, yes, her. Just tell, it's completed. There's parking. We may have a reserved parking for her. There's sidewalks. Everything's done. The gate is done, signage. We were waiting on the bumper stops or the parking areas, but those are, have been delivered and all the work there is completed. I talked to grounds and they did all the moving of the base course in and around those areas that were were concreted in and we're waiting to see if we get some rain, if we need a little bit or additional loads of base course. We'll see where we're at with that for proper drainage, but we'll wait to see if and when we need that. I haven't.
I'm sorry, were you talking about the concrete bumpers?
Yes, sir.
On the parking area, the handicap?
Yes, sir, there's, there were.
I think I went, when I went over there last week, they were in there, you know?
Yeah, there was four and four for those different handicap ones, but we had like 30 that were going alongside that gated or the chailing fence into that drainage pond. We were gonna put some additional parking spots in there.
But it looks, it looks, it looks fantastic. I like the way that came out.
Yeah, the grounds guys did a good job in spreading that dirt around. It looks compacted. We're gonna see where we need, you know, do any touch ups, but I think it's good to go. It looks really nice.
Good job.
Let's see, so our grounds department is pretty busy. You know, there's two guys that are trying to stay up with the weeds. You know, they can, they do that weekly and I know that Jimmy is concerned because we're running out of the N95 masks for them when we do the spraying of roundup. I know that we've, we're also starting to cut and fertilize and we're also got water and we're irrigating areas that we have access to water. We continue to work with Chris and Paul with our preventative maintenance master plan. They're working with us on possible projects and funding that we will qualify for. It's all based on part of the reporting that we do in-house with School Dude and Maintenance Direct. And then address any of the things that we got hit on as far as safety. So we're trying to do all the work that's need on a daily basis and kind of check our boxes and do the reporting so we can have access to that data. And again, the custodians continue to work inside the buildings. I think all the schools have already scheduled some teachers to kind of clear out their personal stuff so that we can get some teachers or custodians to go in there, do the flooring and the walls and all that. The teachers still have their laptops and they're continuing doing the online work with our students. So in no way are they punching out. They're just clearing out the facility so that the custodians can go in there and do some work. We're looking at getting additional, not additional, but re-quoting the flooring at the high school. Removal of the carpeting and doing the VCT. We had quotes the beginning of the year and then in the summertime, but things have changed and it's just hard to get contractors and businesses to come out with everything that's going on to get them set up and come out and give us quotes. But we're waiting on quoting for the flooring at the high school. And also Jimmy has completed and then there's three quotes that are in. I didn't put it on the agenda, guys, but there's plans to convert one of the B Wing Labs at the high school for Mrs. Archer, the music teacher for the high school. And we have three different contractors that bid on that. That's gonna require some soundproofing of that room, some shelving and just moving some stuff around. So I believe those bids are in that we just got the last one in, so we're hoping to find a place for Mrs. Archer in music. Let's see, I also reached out for this gentleman to get a quote on trimming and pruning of some of the trees that are really huge trees and we don't have the, well, manpower and the equipment to do the pruning and we're waiting on finalizing that. So we clean up some of the trees at the middle school. There's some mulberries in and around the central office. Then I have one big tree at the mobile home at, on the, on the yard and transportation that's budding up against that mobile home. So we're trying to prune up and clean up some of those trees. And we're just waiting on approval. I know Sheila was working with Chris and Paul on submitting an application so that we could get approval to possibly do the work for the HVAC system and possible re-roofing of parts of the middle school. So all that's going on for, up to now for the month of May.
Thank you. We'll move on to dang, we went right by you, Mike. I'm sorry. I went to we'll get, we'll get you next meeting, Mike. 2A is superintendent report. Sorry, I went right by that.
Well, that's, we had Daniel right underneath that, so no, that's, we're right in line. We're good. I just wanted to just kind of give an update, which there's a whole lot of, I don't know, right now. And that is, you know, based for next full year, some of the things that we're hearing. And right now, what we're hearing is that when we come back, that it'll be some type of hybrid model. So kind of a combination between virtual learning, what we're doing now and then actually go cover the school. And so we don't know what that's gonna look like. There hasn't been a whole lot of guidance yet. It's just some of the things that we're hearing across the state from just different conversations that we've had in state, but also throughout the country and what are some of the other states doing? And that seems to be kind of the direction that everybody's leaning towards is some type of hybrid combination. And they're also thinking about only having our kids, our population in any given building, half of that population in any given time. So we've already been, we've been pushing out information for our principals to start talking and starting that discussion about what would that look like? If we're going to have only half of our population in any given day, what would that look like? How would, how would we structure that? What would be involved as far as transportation, bell schedules? And so we're trying to get ahead of curve, but we're kind of shooting at a moving target. We really don't know what, what to expect, but we're just anticipating just from information that we're getting what schools may look like. Of course, a lot of breaks to do ID and sanitizers, that sort of thing. So but we were hoping to get a little bit of information today with the governor's announcement, but none of it really focused on schools, is what I understood. And so we do have the secretary's meeting, a meeting with the secretary of ed tomorrow. So we're hoping that maybe we'll get some more information. So it's an ongoing process of where we're going and anticipation of what that might look like. Other pieces, as you know, graduation was always, you know, the big topic, what are we going to do? And I hope you've had a chance to look at the Facebook site where we started doing the virtual roving. And I think, Andrew, they're doing about five at a time?
Five at a time, Facebook and also on our website, we have a special section on our website for the 2020 graduation class. And you'll see in there, there's a link to open up the virtual roving. And as we're posting on Facebook, we're also adding to that on the website.
I did say yesterday's five. I think that was, that was the first.
The first five is yesterday.
And so we've got the next five is today.
Correct.
And we'll continue that until we honor. We're also looking at the 22nd, which would have been our graduation date. They're doing something a little bit different. A photo op. Situation we hear from where we can, where families can come and take pictures with their, with their kids and the graduates. And but, you know, very controlled, very time oriented. And so we're hoping we can still do that from right now until moving forward. And of course, you know, I think the big thing that I've heard from parents and students was, let's hold off. Let's hold off a little bit. Let's wait and see what happens. So we're hoping that as we phase in, you know, hoping even more and more that we can hold some type of formal ceremony, even if it's July or August. But just kind of let everyone end it, you know, if we're able to. That's really it. Like I said, there's a whole lot of, I don't know at this point, but we're really working to get ahead of curve and trying to anticipate what it might look like.
I had a question on this hybrid model as well, just looking into what the bus schedule. Like if you were to have half days, you know, one schedule would be half and then the other gets the other half. The buses.
So we, so that was one of the things. So when we started talking with the principals, we said, okay, we could do a couple of different things. We could do like a kid or daughter model, a half a day where it's half day and half day, or we could do every other day. And after talking to Eduardo, he said, you know, if we do it half day, half day, then that's gonna double our transportation costs. So we kind of moved away from that and started to look at every other day. So we're thinking if we can get half the kids, again, this isn't a set of some, but some of the planning that we've done is if we can get half the kids to attend Monday and Wednesday and then the other half to attend Tuesday and Thursday. Of course, we would take into consideration siblings and that sort of thing and parent requests. And then Friday would be all virtual. So that's what we're hoping. The other thing is that we want to offer a virtual track for those kids and have the capacity to just be 100% virtual to be able to do that as well. So we don't know how that would look, but we want to offer that as well. Any other questions?
Oh, was that it on the superintendent's report? Okay, move on to limited public forum. I don't think you have anybody from the public there, so.
And no one has posted any comments.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to number four, approval of financials. Consider approval of the April 2020 bills. Are there questions on the April expenditures?
I had nothing, Mr. Mitchell.
The electric bill would be way lower and it's not.
You said the what was it? Didn't hear.
Yeah, it's stupid. The electric bill. I thought it would be lower than what it was.
Oh, it is lower though. It runs 20, 25, 26, 27,000. This was 15,000 in here. I thought it would be lower than that too, but I'm glad to see that it's lower than average. It was, there was two months' bill in there. I think it was 15 a month. Yeah, can you take a look at that for us, Mike? So I'm seeing 15 one month and 13 the other month. Would you compare that to March and April of last year for us? And send us that information out. We should be looking at any ways to cut that bill because that's, that's a lot of money for, in April, $13,000 for electric when we don't have the kids coming to that school, so.
Do they are trying to wonder?
Well, remember, we've got our custodians that are doing work, so, you know, it is, but we could probably do a better job of, you know, sectioning off buildings, that sort of thing.
But I think that is considerably lower than normal.
It is. I believe so.
I had a question about one expenditure too, and I would just like somebody to look into it. It's not really a question. On page 15. This is something that my son does outside audits for companies. And when he comes in and does that, that's one thing he says they're all just getting killed on, is Pitney Bowes. If you look at what you're paying for that service, you paid $1,000 for postage and you paid an extra $870 to lease a mailing machine. So it almost doubled your cost of postage. So you guys should, should look at that and see if that is something that we could do without going forward. Maybe it's not in the school thing, but when it doubles your postage bill, doesn't seem like a really, really great deal. He said a lot of places they're paying $1,500 for that service. And he said in there, they're paying $1,500 a month for service and they're doing $200 worth of postage on it. So we would just check into that.
Is this the first, is this the first time it's been in place, Greg?
No, we've paid for it all the time. Preston just happened to mention to me that he was doing an outside audit for somebody that we know went in, looked at their company to figure out where they could cut back, so on and so forth. He said, Dad, they were getting hit for $1,500 a month. They paid $18,000 last year for a postage machine. They were only buying $200 worth of postage a month. So just because they had it, they've been doing it forever. So much stuff is done by email and by other methods of correspondence now that a lot of people are still paying big money for those machines, so.
Okay.
Just something to take a look at.
Yes.
Is there a motion? Or is there any other questions on the April bills?
I didn't see anything else.
On that same page for SANS, for bike stuff or concessions now, there's no plastics.
So, so remember that, you know, these were purchased as we were done last.
We get a statement every month.
Yeah, I think a lot of those expenses, people were, there were hotel rooms and stuff, but I think it was all probably from early March, so.
And there's some registration in here that has already been refunded. So I saw mine. Because everything was canceled.
Yeah.
So is there a motion for approval of April? Is there more questions?
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't see who made the motion. Motion by Elva, second by Lupe. All in favor, Elva?
Yes.
Lupe?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
My, my vote is yes. April 2020 bill surpassed. Consider approval of budget adjustment requests, transfers and cash requests. You want to run these one at a time? You want to go over them with us, Mike? The first one's Fund 27183.
The New Mexico grown local. So this is a grant that we received and it is for the purpose to purchase only New Mexico grown fresh produce to be used in the district. And so we did hit this grant. It is in the amount of 6,000, I believe. And so that's, that goes forward. You know, Rex does a really good job with our food services and this is one of the things that, that he stays on top of. It is a grant for $6,000 to buy a New Mexico grown fresh produce.
So a motion to approve that?
Oh, move.
Motion by Member Montez, second by Vice President Gryl. All in favor, Elva?
Yes.
Lupe? Chris?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Okay. Second one is cleanup bars for Fund 11,024,101, and there's a whole list of them there.
I was just gonna say, just real quickly, these are all cleanup bars and, you know, we get to the end of the year where we had to move some money around. And so I do have a seat here to stand for questions on any of these.
We're just trying to spend down everything so we have a balance in one line of $100 moving it so we can send it. And mostly transportation. And so I did print, we increased the 31,701 bar by $2,000. We had to get a root five booked for some musical instruments. And so then there were supply assets instead of fixed assets, so I had to. That's why that's different. And then we added one line and changed it $1,000 on the transportation.
There are motion to approve the cleanup bars.
So move.
Motion by Vice President Gryl, second by Member Montez. All in favor, Elva?
Yes.
Lupe? Chris?
Yes.
My vote is yes. Okay, the bars have been approved. Mike, was there a second list? I saw something in email right before the meeting. Was there another list of bars besides this?
The Title III bar, that's right up at the next page. We're the fiscal manager for Cobra and Tier C's Title III. And so they requested a bar from PD, so the task is their approval from PD and then the bar that we would be offering.
So districts that get less than $10,000 in Title III have to have a fiscal agent to be able to manage the money flows through. And so I guess Hatch Public Schools has had a history of doing that with Tier C and with Cobra. And so this is just to amend their, their application and submit a bar so that they can spend their money.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So move.
By, I saw Elva raise her hand first, Chris. Motion by Vice President Gryl, second by Member Montez. All in favor, Elva?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lupe? My vote is yes. Okay, that bar passes. I don't see anything listed under unfinished business. Move on to number six, new business. Consider approval of E-rate category one services. CenturyLink responded.
Andrew here, who is going to talk just a little bit about the E-rate category one services.
Okay, yeah, it's that time of year again for category one services, which is our internet and phone service. Once again, as always, CenturyLink's the only one that responds. They're our only provider out here. As far as our internet is concerned, we're staying with what we had before at 500 megabit connection. But we do have the option to bump up during this, this year if we need to. You know, if we get new programs or start using more bandwidth. Right now, we're good at 500, so I don't, I didn't see a need of increasing that. The one thing that has changed is that we're gonna go to a month-to-month payment plan, as it were, between here and Garfield. And the reason for that is because we have the Garfield fiber going in. We don't want to get stuck into a contract for a year when we have district own fiber going in. Once our fiber is in and it's lit and it's running, we can give notice to CenturyLink and we can cancel that portion of our, of our internet bill. That's gonna save us half of what our internet costs to begin with. So that, that's why we are going to month-to-month.
Andrew, what do we pay for that 500 megabit service?
I was afraid you were gonna ask that.
Well, if you can just get back to me with it, that'd be great. I just wanted to know. I just put in 100 megabit service at the store. They'll be, they'll be lighting that up in the next couple of weeks, so. It'll be, it'll be lighting that up in the next couple of weeks, so.
Okay, okay.
I was just wondering if they're giving you a better deal than what they're giving me, or?
Yeah, we have a, we initially, initially Garfield was at, two years ago, Garfield was at a, a one gig connection. And I didn't see the point of them having a one gig connection, and, but the district had only a 500 meg connection. So we dropped Garfield down, and it's been perfect. We haven't seen any slowdown in Garfield, so we saved money that way. Now it's time to go month to month. It's going to go up a little bit, because it's no longer under contract, it's under month to month. It's the growing pains that we're going to have to do, but in the long run, we won't have that bill anymore.
And do we know how long it's going to take for that line to go in? Are they working on it?
They, they are, we are, we were waiting, Mr. Mitchell, I don't know if you did reach out to Andy Nunez, the mayor, or not, but I know that the representative from the city did contact our contractors. They reached out to them, things are moving along. The city's going to put it in their agenda for this month, so that should be in place. And then we get NMDOT to approve. We're waiting on BLM for final approval. So within the next week or two, they should start drilling and laying fiber.
That's great, I did not catch Andy, so.
Oh.
Mine's going a lot faster, but they're only drilling 338 feet for mine, so that'll be quick.
Right, right. They're, they're thinking it'll take, you know, weeks, two weeks to drill it. You know, and it's all underground, we're going aerial, no location is going to be aerial, including the river. We're boring under the river. And so it'll come out of the ground at my office and come out of the ground at Garfield.
Wow, they actually, they go under the riverbed?
Under the riverbed. Yeah, so it was actually cheaper to go, cheaper but also quicker as far as permits and stuff to go under the river than it was to set holes and go over the river.
Yeah.
So I can't understand, I, you know, I just, yep, okay, good, we're, we're, we're moving forward, so that's all I care. Right, so that, that's, that's our, our category one services, phone services hasn't changed. Mr. Mitchell, I know that you at, at some point had said, well, what about, you know, our phone bills are so high that, you know, hey, why can't we go to voice over IP? The thing is, we are on a voice over IP system, but even if we were to, I can change it over to what they call a SIP, which is phone service over our internet, and we can drop our PRI lines. If we do that, we come to a single point of failure. If we lose internet, phone's down. If we lose one, you know, at least if we lose one, we still have the other. But we still have to have a provider that's providing us all these numbers, our, our district numbers. That we will never get away from, you know. We already cut out all of the, what they call the potlines, the plain old telephone lines that used to be our fax lines and stuff like that. That's all run over our phone system at this time. So we did cut down the potline, so that saved money, but there's nothing left to save on, on voice services. Unfort, unfortunately, I wish it was very simple, but unfortunately, we can't.
With that fiber, you should be at 99.9% uptime, so.
We, we are, you know, I think since I've been here just over five years, I think we've had internet go down twice for a matter of a couple of hours. We had one Christmas break, I think it was, we were down the whole break, but that was due to our switch equipment. That was result, we weren't in session, so there wasn't an issue there. And then our phone lines, recently, probably about three months ago, we had one of our PRIs go down, but we still had the others. So we lost half of our, our lines, so people were trying to call out, they, hey, I'm getting a busy sign, why am I getting a busy signal? I called up CenturyLink, they came out, they fixed the PRI, boom, we're back up fully running. So we truly haven't, you know, the, the uptime has been phenomenal since I've been here, it's great.
Great, okay, is there a motion to approve the, to approve CenturyLink as the, as the E-rate category one services provider?
I raised my hand, Koka.
Member, Member Montez makes the motion, second by Vice President Grai, all in favor, Elva?
Yes.
Lupe?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And my, my vote is yes also, so that passes. Six B, consider approval of Title III application.
Yes, sir. Title III is an application that is focused on English learners. And here in the Hatch Public Schools, we have 44% of our student population that's identified as English learners. And so this is just extra funding that we could, that we receive to bring up $45,000 that we can use to provide professional development, supplies and materials, that sort of thing, to help us with our English language development for our kids.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the Title III application? Uh, Elva? Elva with the motion? Is there a second? Lupe with the second, all in favor, Elva?
Yes.
Lupe? Chris?
Yes.
My vote is yes, motion carries. Six D, consider approval of the new bilingual application.
Bilingual application is a little bit different than the Title III, they don't give us any amount, because that actually comes through the SEDN as prior year funding. But we do have to do the application process and provide projections and whatnot. And what you'll see different this year is, as I mentioned to the board before, our, our transition from the transitional model to heritage language and dual language models, which are more additive type models. We're using both English and Spanish to conduct the instruction. And so it's a, it's a much more effective model. Research has shown that kids actually do better when they're learning both languages. And so, and that's what we're doing, we're starting to switch that over, so that we can provide better services for our kids. And, and something to note here is that it's, it's one of the big differences between the transitional model and the models that we're moving towards is that anybody can participate in these models. So in the past, under transitional, only Ls are English learners to participate. With B, anyone, so English teachers, Spanish teachers and bilingual speakers can participate. So it opens us up for more opportunity for our kids. And so, but we have to get the application in and submit it, so that we start generating those counts this coming year or the next year. And because again, it's prior year. Questions?
Is there a motion to approve the bilingual application as presented? Motion by Vice President Grai? Second, second by Member Castillo, all in favor, Elva?
Yes.
Lupe? Chris?
Yes.
My vote is yes. So bilingual application passes. Under new business, six D, consider approval of resolution of board meeting dates.
Yes, sir, and so we have the schedule for next school year and the different meetings and consistent with this year. And still on Wednesdays, the second, second Wednesday of the month, and you'll see the.
Is there a motion to approve the board meeting dates for 2021? Member, I'm sorry, motion by Vice President Grai, second? Is there a second? Second by Member Castillo, all in favor, Elva?
Yes.
Lupe? Chris?
Yes.
My vote is also yes. So that passes. Six E, consider approval of Open Meetings Act.
So we have to approve the Open Meetings Act every year, so that's a resolution for 2020 Open Meetings Act.
Is there a motion to approve the Open Meetings Act?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion by Member Montez, second by Member Castillo, all in favor of approving the Open Meetings Act 2020. Elva?
Yes.
Lupe?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Seven, items for future meetings?
Right, but I think this is the time, but we're going to need to request another special meeting. Hopefully, we can do that on the 27th before the end of the month. And what we need that special meeting for is to clean up any budget items as we, as we go into June and finish up the, the year. And we're also hopeful that by that time, we will have our, our hanging budget that will be, that will be good as well. But it's mostly for any type of bars, we need to do last minute bars to move money around. Get us set to get us to the end of this year. So I don't know if the 27th works, but, you know.
27th of which month, Mike, May or June? I didn't hear you.
Of, of May.
27th of May.
It's in two weeks, actually.
June 1st is our deadline for transfer bars, that's why we asked.
Okay.
We have a meeting this next week, no?
We do have a meeting next week as well.
Is that doable for everybody?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, I don't think we need a motion for that or anything, Mike, you can just set the special meeting for that date.
Okay, we can do those, wanting sure it worked when everybody's good.
Mike, I've got a question for you, how do we, are we standing right now with the, with the non-certified, with the professional and the, and the support staff, are we doing good there?
Yeah, as far as staffing. Is that what you're asking, Mr. Montez?
Yes. I'm sorry, I was cutting out.
One of the things that we're looking at this month is, as you guys know, there's going to be a special session that's going to be happening. Right now, what we're hearing is the second or third week of June. And so a lot of districts, including, you know, Hatch, Hatch Schools, we're just kind of waiting to see what might happen. But right now, we, we do have, we're going to anticipate some openings in some of our positions. But as far as positions themselves, when we submitted our budget to the state, it was for the same number of FTEs for, as this year for next year. And, and then, you know, we're also going to look at, if it's possible, to, to look at a couple of other, like some of the positions that we've talked about in the past, such as reassessing our maintenance and seeing what we can do there. We're looking at different ideas, different options to address that. But that's one of the areas that we want to look at. Others are deal with instruction. And so we're trying to, you know, the recommendation that we received from PEE is right now to hold off on any new positions until after the session, so that's what we're trying to hold true. But at some point, we'll have to, people that are new in the district that will no longer be with us, but, but we're going to hire people, we'll probably be advertising those here, probably the first of June or so. Not very many, I think we have three or four positions, three or four positions, they're all teaching positions at this point.
We're hoping, they're all certified.
All certified, yes, sir.
Okay, Mike, thank you.
Hey, move on to number eight. Next regular board meeting is set for Wednesday, June 10th at 6:00 PM, same place. We'll try to be there next time, Mike, I'm, I'm up at least walking, but I didn't think I could physically get into the car and physically get out of the car, but I'll, I'll, I'll be there next time, and I'll be there in two weeks. So we've got a special board meeting, May 27th, Wednesday, are we doing that at the same time? At 6:00 PM also? Great, so May 27th for the special meeting and June 10th for the next regular meeting at 6:10 PM. Anything else this evening? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I saw Elsa for Elva again too. So a motion made by Vice President Grai, second by Member Montez, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, I'm sorry I wasn't there this evening, I will be there next time.